Call the May 18th Common Council Meeting Order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Alderman Dandrea.
Here.
Alderman Mayor.
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Here.
Alderman Barber.
Here.
Alderman Nelson.
Here. We have a court, please rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the general citizens' comment, any citizen wishing to speak? Ms. Gitt, good to see you again. It's been awhile.
Uh, Dan Gint, 9011 West Hawthorne Lane, I'm calling, I'm here tonight to talk about the Rock event, the Bon Jovi. In September 18 to 2020, Mayor Olson even sent a letter to the developers stating his concern about watch parties that have been a problem that has gotten even worse. Uh, in my opinion, this Bon Jovi event is a watch party, you're watching the big screen, and that's exactly what caused a lot of problems in September 2018. The other question I have is when was this information, this application available for the public to review? I understand that this was submitted not very long ago, so when was this information given to the public for review? And also, when did the aldermen review this? I know at the License Committee meeting, John Nelson mentioned that even Mayor Olson had some concerns, and he asked for, I believe, the speakers on the concourse and also the pasture or outfield, whatever it's called, to be turned down. And I appreciate that, Mayor Olson, I, I, I think that that's a really important thing to do. And I believe Scott Johnson did agree to that at the License Committee. But I'd like it to be clarified exactly what that means to be turned down. I mean, it needs to be meaningful and significant change and a significant reduction because it is so loud that the neighborhood is, it echoes throughout the neighborhood. And I understand they're using the infrastructure from the baseball field to broadcast this event. But the baseball field events are so disruptive to our quality of life for thousands of people around here, and I'd really appreciate that that would be addressed. The final question is, this, the entire process is very confusing to me, and I, I, I think that there's, needs to be clarification, exactly what is permitted, what is not permitted, what is a special use, and what is the process for each thing? Like, if it's a special use, it requires this process, these are the bullet points that need to be followed, these are the application deadlines, this is the material submitted, and this is, if, this is a permitted use under the stadium, but it's a special event, or whatever. There seems like there's so many clarifications that need to be made regarding this development, and there's never seems to be any consistency. I think for a government to be efficient, there needs to be proper procedure, and I think it's severely lacking with this development. And it's been that way for almost 10 years. It's about time that there's some clarification made, so not only the public, but staff and aldermen and everybody making decisions on this understands what the process needs to be. I think that's all I have. Oh, I have some documents I'd like to submit, because I believe that the ordinances are not being followed. And I also have the letter from Mayor Olson from September also, if I could have that on the online file, would that be possible, Sandy? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Also, I, I assume this takes care of the letter that you sent?
Yes, that's, I included that in the packet here.
Okay.
Because, yeah, the, the question about the ordinances, I, I think with the short notice, because the, the developer submitted this information yesterday. So the top of the application says 30 days, business days. Yesterday makes four business days before this event is held. That is ridiculous, it's not a church event that there's, um, run by pastor and volunteers and things like this. This is a for-profit organization that has professional promotional staff, that this is their job to do these type of events. And to say, oh, I didn't know I needed to do this, or whatever the reason is. And this is the pattern that's been going on for years, for all the special events, for all, they've been going on for years. I understand there's other applications for building permits that might be submitted in a timely manner. But for the special events, I think that the city should research exactly how many times has the special events been properly submitted on time and circulated and supplied to the public? I would say none, zero. And I'd like to be proven wrong, thank you.
Okay, and what else from the public wishing to speak? Since there is no other person from the public, I will close the public comment section of the meeting. We move on to Item C, approval of a regular common council meeting minutes of May 4th, any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Dandrea and Mayor, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings, we have no organizational business, we have no letters and petitions. So we move on to reports and recommendations. G1, direction to staff for using Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewerage District funds to develop and implement a Franklin private property infiltration and inflow policy program. Are you impressed that I got that?
Congratulations.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to introduce Becky Speck to you. Becky is an employee of, um, uh, MMSD, she works with Jerome Flogel with the PPII program. Uh, not only is she an engineer with MMSD, but she's also Franklin resident, and we have her on the report of public work. So if you haven't met Becky, uh, she lives in, I believe Alderwoman Hanneman's district, I believe, right?
Sorry?
You live in?
Now, don't put her on the spot.
Okay, alright.
Where do you live?
I live down by 27th and Ryan.
Yes, yeah, okay. South side of Putes, so, alright. So, um, you may recall last year, uh, we had a committee, the whole meeting, we talked about PPII and the issues that Franklin has seen and the problems that we have, and we really need to do something. You tasked us with proceeding with some sort of idea that we talked about as far as where we would investigate private homes and, um, and try to figure out how to do this. So, long story short, I, I know it's a short meeting, but I, I don't want to take a lot of time on this, unless you have questions, we want to fully answer all your questions. So I'm not going to read what's in the council packet to you. I, I do want to highlight that there's 1.1 million dollars that we have currently earmarked for Franklin to spend on PPII. That's private property inflowing infiltration. And, uh, we need to figure out how to spend it, or we're going to start losing it. And, uh, district has made that very clear, that they want to see, uh, the 28 membered communities, uh, spend down those, those dollar funds.
But we want to be clear on that statement. It's, it's not that we want to spend it without some purpose and some meaningful use of it. We need to find the appropriate project to spend this money on.
Very appropriately. So we, um, with the committee, with Becky, with our consultants, with Mike Roberts, uh, your utility superintendent, um, it's, we've pretty much been meeting weekly for the past couple of months and several times before that, trying to develop a policy that we talked about in our committee, the whole meeting, um, that we could adapt towards Franklin. It's still rough, but we're, we're there, I think, as far as the concept, and I've listed on your council packet, A, B, C, D, E are things that, uh, things we'd like to include in the, in the policy. So first of all, we're, we're looking at we would, uh, split the city up into basins. First and primary would be the, uh, St. Martin's Lift Station basin, so that's roughly the northwest corner of the city, because that's where we are experiencing problems, whenever it rains, the, the lift station runs excessively hard. And we, we think that most of that's coming from the private side. So these are homes in the basin. We tried some projects this past couple of years, we weren't very successful, thank you COVID, trying to get into homes to do this. So, um, we're looking to maybe do a policy where it might be a little more, if you will, forceful. The situation is, we would use our PPI funds, we would pay for an inspector, we would prioritize a basin, and then inside that basin, we would start with the oldest homes first and work our way to the most recent. When it gets to a point of diminishing return, we would then switch basins to another problem basin and then work our way, way up and likewise. So, in theory, if this program were to go on long enough, we would eventually get to all of the homes in Franklin. But we would definitely want to start with the most severe issues prior, first, where we might find the most problems, and, and we're going to start there. So, PPII, again, just for those, bring everybody up to speed, we're talking private property. Um, these are funds we can spend outside the rideaway, if you will. So these are, for example, if people's sump pumps are connected, um, people's downspouts might be connected, foundation drains might be connected, those kinds of things is what we're, what we're trying to search for. So we would prioritize in the basin, we would prioritize the homes. Uh, once we find a home, we would, uh, notify the homeowner, uh, we're thinking registered letter and, uh, something on the door. And we're talking single family and multi, or two-family homes. And we would say, we want to schedule an inspection. That homeowner would have two months from the date of that letter to schedule the inspection. If they don't, well, I would propose that we offer some sort of, uh, incentive for them to participate, basically double their sewage rates. So it's like $5 a week is maybe what we would charge, somewhat of a surcharge. So if, if they participate fully, they, they, they call and schedule and get the appointment scheduled, they don't get charged anything. So we would have our inspector and the policy would pay for that completely. If something were to be found incorrect, then we would contact the homeowner and say, you have these things that need to be fixed. Oh, by the way, MMSD has a program we call, uh...
Pipe Check.
Pipe Check, thank you. Uh, that they call Pipe Check, that partially pays for, but, but it's very beneficial, uh, to homeowners who have those kinds of issues. So through the MMSD program, and we would take some of our PPI funds and direct those towards MMSD, so Franklin residents would have access to those funds to help pay for some of the problems to fix their homes as part of this program. I guess the alternative, if they decide to not participate, again, we would talk about some sort of surcharge, and we've, we've discussed maybe, again, the $5 per week kind of keeps coming to surface. So, um, so once that's done, uh, if, if by chance the home is fine, then let's, we check them off the list and we say, thank you very much, and it doesn't cost a homeowner anything. But, uh, my history with similar policies, there will be a significant portion of people that, yeah, it's, it's not a big deal, I'll just pay the, pay the, uh, pay the surcharge fee. If that should happen, uh, we would collect that in a separate account, and we could pay for other things. I'm going to give credit to the mayor, he suggested that, uh, engineers are poor, uh, public relation folks. And, uh, the way we, we tend to word things, including engineers at MMSD and myself and, and even our consultants. So we've talked about, uh, acquiring a public relation firm, um, and helping us with, send the message. Um, I was advised today that I cannot pay for that with MMSD funds. So we, as a city, might have to decide if we want to pay for that out of our sewer department and/or notice we might be collecting fees from folks that, that don't want to participate. We could use those funds to help, help reimburse ourselves for the, uh, for the PR effort. But we definitely want to, to go through the effort to make sure that, that we send the message out as nicely as we can. We give the message out that it's well-understood, and people understand the benefit it is for them to participate, because it truly is a, it is a benefit. This is a chance to use MMSD monies to fix things. Uh, in the future, we may have to fix them anyway without the MMSD money. So that would, that would be the cost wholly on the city and the cost wholly on the homeowners. And, and that's not a situation I'd prefer, especially since we have the money today. Becky, is there anything else that you might want to add?
He does it.
Sure.
There's something that's not in the document, and you didn't mention it. There's a lot of talk about inspectors. Our building inspection department just cannot do this.
Yeah, this, this would not be our...
And the money for the contract inspections would also come out of the fund.
Correct.
That would be correct.
And they'll also be in charge of record-keeping, who got the letter, $1 to $2, or whatever the amount goes on, if they fix it, when it comes off. Hold on, Hannah, uh, we'll push a button.
Mayor, I would like to know, address what an example of what a solution might be.
I'm sorry, could you please state your question one more time?
What is an example of what a solution might be?
Okay, so, um, the couple items that we'd be looking at as we go into the homes is looking for a downspout disconnects. Um, so example, if, um, your downspouts on the outside of your home are connected to the sanitary sewer, which older homes have, had a tendency to do, um, what we would do is go in and disconnect those downspouts on the outside of the home and direct them to somewhere in the property, um, just charging onto the grass. If a home does not have a, um, sump pump, that is a pretty good sign that the foundation drains are directly connected to the sanitary sewer. And so that clear water that is being collected from around the home foundation is being directed towards the sanitary sewer, and then it's clean groundwater getting mixed in with your sanitary sewer waste from the home. So we would, um, provide a financial incentive for the homeowner to install a sump pump, which would then be discharged to a proper location. Um, one of the other key points that we look at, um, for reducing INI is the condition of the sanitary sewer lateral. Part of the benefit of this program is educating the homeowner that they are actually the owner of their sanitary sewer lateral, which from our past experience, most homeowners don't really understand that that part of their utility system is actually their responsibility to maintain. So as part of this program that Glenn is proposing, would also include, um, a sanitary sewer lateral inspection. And that is when we put a, um, small camera down the sanitary sewer lateral, and a plumber can get a good idea of if you have a lot of infiltration coming in. Infiltration can come into a lateral through, um, structural defects, cracks, breaks, holes, um, misaligned joints, um, which allow roots to, um, grow in, because roots from vegetation naturally grow towards, um, wet conditions, which then can cause basement backups and also allow clear water to enter into the sanitary sewer system. So those are the three key areas that we'd be looking to, um, address. Oh, I'm sorry, and also, if there is an existing, um, sump pump installed in the basement, we would double-check to make sure that it's plumbed in the proper manner to be discharged into an appropriate location, which is not a utility sink, a floor drain, any location that would be discharging into the sanitary sewer.
So you're concerned more so with sanitary sewer, not so much with storm sewer drain?
Correct.
Because there are some homes that actually got a waiver because they had, you know, it's discharging so much, the pump, that they're putting it into the storm drain, just in the street.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's not, we're not looking at, um, doing anything in regards to, um, disconnecting from the storm sewer, just the sanitary sewer. One of the other offerings that is included in part of this policy is if you have, um, homes that have a existing sump pump or downspout, where, um, it's causing icing during the winter, we, um, under the Pipe Check program, we also include an option of getting a financial incentive to assist a homeowner to put in a storm lateral, which then, for like your example, would help connect their discharge from their home to a storm lateral, I mean, a storm sewer.
I'm glad that was clarified on the record, because that might be something you might sort of want to address in a letter that you're sending them. So if you have people that have that, they're not thinking that, they don't always know the different storms, or, so... Making that clarification in the letter, that that wouldn't be what you were looking for, but that you have suggestions to help them for that, might be, um, a way to get other people on board for that.
And, and that's precisely why a PR firm can help us get that message out, so it's clear to the common person.
Great, thank you.
We're fighting with each other. Alderman Mayor, then Alderman Barber.
Glenn, since there's the communication of the water from the home to the sewer system, I'm assuming these are all on MMSD to begin with? They're all, uh, customers of MMSD?
So if their sanitary sewer is connected to our sewer system, yes, they, um, they would be a, and, so this is, that's a good point, let me clarify that. We're only looking at the homes that are connected to our sanitary sewer system. So if you have a, you know, 1920 home, but it's got a septic field, that would not be part of this policy. Uh, we would be looking to make some changes to our code, so if and when we do extend sanitary sewer to that home, it would have to get inspected to show that it passes before we would allow it to connect.
Okay, and would we consider putting a cap on expenditures to bring these homes up to code if we do find that there's major issues? I mean, we're not going to want to force them to spend a, I don't know, give it a number.
It's a good question. I can't be as lenient as I was on my previous, um, jobs where I developed this policy. Thank you state legislatures that passed some laws that prohibit me, prohibit me from doing that. So, um, that is part of the, the surcharge. Uh, people will figure out that it's much cheaper just to, just to pay the extra 60 bucks a quarter than have to, uh, have to pay whatever it is, takes to, to fix it. In reality, what I found happens is, at the time of sale, so if I'm buying that 1920 house from you, I would say, hey, Dan, before we buy the house, I want you to fix it, or we're going to make a compensation so I get it fixed at the time of sale. So it may be worse to some people to just not fix it and pay the, you know, $5 a week or whatever the, the surcharge fee is.
But I don't think we did Alderman Mayor's question, really, and we'll have to work it out internally, but it's, okay. So they agreed to the inspection, inspection goes in, finds a couple of problems, and now it's 20,000 bucks to fix. Now, they're not eligible to pay the, the penalty rate.
So, so the...
We don't have to deal with that.
Two penalties. Yeah, one penalty is that they don't schedule the inspection. The other penalty would be enacted if they don't fix what we tell them to fix.
And that's where you're talking about the leniency possibility?
Again, we still need to work through some of the details of the policy, but yeah, that's, that's where we're going with that.
Has any other of our neighboring communities taken on a project and did this, and what kind of success are they having with it?
Go ahead.
Um, right now, MMSD is actually implementing the Pipe Check program, which basically Glenn has designed his, um, new program off of and is taking advantage of some of the benefits that our program is offering with those financial incentives to help homeowners offset their costs to do these repairs. So Glenn's program is basically focusing on the, um, inspection, um, to get more participants to review the condition of their home. And then we'll, um, Glenn's program is going to provide additional funding to the Pipe Check program to help, um, those homeowners reduce their financial impact on these required repairs. Now, we have other municipalities, and, and the Pipe Check program is being offered throughout all of MMSD's service area. Um, the city of Milwaukee is also doing a similar program. They have a, um, standard inspection program for looking for cross-connections. Very similar with trying to identify if we're seeing sanitary show up in storm sewers. So that's their slight variation on the program, but they are also directing, um, some additional funds, or at least they're planning on it, towards the Pipe Check program, and then directing their residents to us to get assistance. But they do have a set required period of time where the homeowner has to take action.
So we would be coming into an existing program?
Yes.
As a city?
That is correct. It, it is very new, to be honest with you, we just started it up this year. And, um, but it is an existing program that has started to be advertised.
Thank you.
So, so if I could clarify, the Pipe Check program is an existing program? Things like Milwaukee is, I understand if they, so if I'm a homeowner, you tell me to fix something, I don't fix it, is it a fine, or how does that?
I apologize, I don't know for sure. I do know that they are told that they have to do a repair within a set period of time, but I can report back to Glenn if there is interest in that, to confirm if, um, the city of Milwaukee implements fines or anything like that, if a homeowner does not follow through with required repairs.
And, and the other difference is, I understand Milwaukee is really looking for contamination. So when they find a storm sewer with contamination, like fecal matter, that's what prompts them to find the neighborhood. Other than that, it's really a voluntary, it's, it's by publication, by advertising, by trying to get the word out. So anyone in a new basin can, can learn of the program, however they learn of it, and say, hmm, my home may be, may be appropriate, and they, and they make, they initiate the phone call. So ours would be somewhat different in the fact that we're trying to systematically look at whole homes in, in Franklin. Again, we're, we're prioritizing, um, but it would be somewhat, or it would be mandatory when we do call you.
Thank you. So I want to be clear that you are looking at inspecting every home in Franklin that is connected to the sewer?
So that is the ultimate goal, if the, if the funds in the program last long enough? I mean, next year, MMSD could say, we're not funding this program anymore and, and call it quits. So then we would, we would exhaust our funds and we'd have to quit from there unless, unless we decide to self-fund it ourselves. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's not a guarantee that, that it's going to last forever. So, again, if the program plays out the way it does, yes, we would, we would see every home in Franklin until we, until we decide that, you know, we're not seeing any return on investment, and we'll just quit. So, you know, if we're getting to homes that are within two years ago, yeah, we don't need to do that. I did put a paragraph on page, uh, on page 10, um, the first paragraph after the, after E. So, we can spend our money on some other projects. So part of this program, we, we may find out that there's what I call a problem neighborhood. Everybody has sump pumps, and they're trying to figure out how to get rid of this. We may be able to use, at that time, decide to direct some of our PPI funds towards, as, uh, a storm lateral that, that, uh, Becky mentioned.
It's very beneficial that if we start seeing trends within a specific area or a municipality to put together a specific project. Because of course, there's always the benefit of mass work being done within a smaller area that we could possibly get lower rates. But the program that is Glenn is being proposed right now not only takes care of, um, identifying older homes that don't realize that they have a problem, um, doing public education so people are aware of different, the importance of reducing the amount of clear water in sanitary sewer systems to help protect their community. But also opens up a door for, um, existing homeowners who know that they have a problem, but, you know, may not really understand the full intent of it, and also can provide that additional financial incentive for them to help make the correct decision instead of just doing a spot repair, which really doesn't address the bigger issue.
May I follow up? How long do you expect it to take to get to every home? Or would you hope, in a best-case scenario, if you had full compliance?
It will be years.
Yeah, because my, I guess what I'm trying to drill down to is my concern being that, um, let's say, for example, this project started three years ago, and the homes that were identified at that point in time, um, as opposed to homes being identified as we sit here today, the costs of repairs are going to be extremely different and, and somewhat punitive. So, I, I'm just still grappling a little bit with the, um, egalitarian process, so that one area or neighborhood doesn't feel unduly targeted or, um, overly burdened.
So, a couple of things. First of all, um, there's a lot of assumptions. You know, we, we're assuming one out of every 10 or one out of every 20 homes needs a repair. We're trying to figure out how far this money will go. Some of the scenarios I run in spreadsheets of 10, 10 years, maybe, we should be able to get everything done. That may be optimistic, it may be pessimistic, I, I, it's just a guess right now. As far as, uh, and again, we haven't developed the policy, nailed it down exactly, that's what we're going to ask it. You know, we need a committee to help us with, but I would kind of like to maybe say that people that, uh, you know, if they have a home of a certain age and they call us ahead of time, we might be able to move them up in the process just to, just to help them out. Because, um, like, like you, folks in Milwaukee who know that they have a problem and want to participate in the Pipe Check program, and they know they have a problem, by all means, let's, let's take care of those low-hanging fruit.
One also, um, benefit, the way Glenn is approaching this program, is by helping fund the Pipe Check program, anyone in the city of Franklin, they don't necessarily have to have gone through his inspection, can take advantage of those funds to be able to get assistance. So it, while Glenn is going through and focusing on key areas, that does not limit who can participate to get that additional funding. It's just getting a better understanding of the impact, um, based on, on age of homes and their utilities. Um, and as we all know with looking at our roads, um, you know, the joy of hoping to be done in 10 years, you know, utilities constantly age. So, um, the homes that were good today may not be in great condition in 10 years, and there could be a potential to carry on the program, um, unless some major development... could be a potential to carry on the program unless some major development is made in how utilities are installed in homes.
Okay, one last point, and then maybe we'll go on. What's not in the documents either is this is not a static contribution by MMSD. The monies accrue every year, as long as MMSD appropriates them. So it's building up year over year. Alderman Mayor, again?
Glenn, I'm assuming this costs us money, the situation costs the taxpayers or the customers of MMSD in Franklin money currently with the excess water in the system?
I would suggest, and Becky, please correct me, but I would suggest to you, we would pay this regardless. So for example, if we decide that, no, we don't want to do this, we would turn back the money, and other communities would benefit from monies that are really collected from Franklin residents.
Okay, I'm just suggesting that maybe there would be a benefit to the city of Franklin to have this done, and maybe if we could quantify that somehow, that might go a long way to giving credibility to the process as well, and maybe even that would free up some funding from the city to help out with the program.
Said differently, what is the cost to the city of Franklin for the infiltration that we experience today?
Oh, I see what you're asking.
I thought I said, okay.
Yeah, we try to, so for example, the homes, quite honestly, in the northeast portion, drain directly to the MIS, and so it doesn't really cost us anything, other than it costs MMSD more money to process and treat and those kinds of things, which costs everybody. Specifically, the Franklin utilities that we really see the detriment of is St. Martin's Lift Station. The pumps just get worn out a lot quicker, they're very expensive pumps. Normally, and I'm going to pull some numbers from memory here, so that's dangerous. On a normal day, St. Martin's Lift Station processes, I believe, $600,000 or 600,000 gallons a day of sewage a day. Get a medium rain, it can be up to 2 MGD. So you're just more wear and tear, it makes equipment run out faster, and it's just a lot more expensive for us to run electricity-wise. I haven't, we haven't run the numbers.
Mayor?
Just from a practical standpoint, it might be helpful, I know you can't come up with exact numbers, but just in our thought process and our commitment process to this program, it might be helpful to have some kind of figure in mind that we're benefiting from this.
And then some of the benefits too could be future issues. So I can see the time, and Franklin is still a growing community, if we fill up a sewer pipe because of I&amp;I, that's less room for development. So there are those kinds of things that you don't realize yet, but you would realize in the future.
The immediate value is, if someone participates in this program, the immediate value is that they get to take advantage of some money contributed to their repair by MMSD. So if they're interested in repairing their plumbing, they now have some financial help to do it. If we didn't run the program, that wouldn't be there.
I get that, but we're committing everyone, once we commit to this, whether they want to jump in the project right now or not, we're committing everyone to get into it once we commit. So I just think it's beneficial for us to look at the expected possible cost savings to everyone to do this.
So Becky, I think he's, so for example, a typical lateral repair, how much would Pipe Check reimburse, and what is a typical repair?
There's a couple alternate methods to do repairs. There is a full lateral replacement, which is any variation where you end up with a new pipe in the ground. Typically, that can be $10,000 to $12,000 per property. And that is probably a little light for the city of Franklin, because the Franklin properties are a little bit larger out here. And under the Pipe Check program, if the homeowner had to do a lateral repair from the home to the sanitary sewer, we provide $5,000 towards that work. If they decide that a lateral lining is more beneficial to them, which can run between $8,000 and $10,000, but your lateral has to be in fairly decent structural condition, we offer a $1,500 offset for that work. But then there's reduced amount of restoration that needs to be done. But overall, for the overall benefits to the community, by having a program like this, you're not just protecting yourself, but you're helping protect your neighbors from the risk of basement backups. I apologize, I'm not as familiar with the impact of basement backups within the city of Franklin, but during the 2010 events, we all saw the impact it had, definitely in the city of Milwaukee and over on the northwest side, where we had millions of dollars of damage during larger storm events. And as we know, the storm events are definitely becoming more impactful throughout the whole region.
What's a sump pump repair?
For a sump pump installation, we typically see that to be around $2,000 to $2,200, and we are offering a $1,500 financial incentive towards that work.
Alderman Barber?
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to submit a statement of intent to MMSD.
Second?
And the committee.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Thank you, Becky.
All those in favor of the one motion of two items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Becky. Move on to item G2 on page 11, which is Resolution Authorized Amendment 3 to Task Order 5 for Rooker and Milky for feasibility analysis and preliminary design of an alternate location for stormwater management in TID 8.
Eight.
I get them all mixed up. The net of this, I'll do this real quick.
Sure.
The net of this is, I've been having lots of conversations with county officials, there may, may, may be an opportunity to swap out some land, which would give us the benefit of being able to put stormwater on an unusable parcel rather than on a saleable parcel. And we need to study the size of the potential pond before we can make that conversation. Alderman?
How does this fit in with the previous parcel that the Milwaukee County had allowed for some stormwater?
So I can answer that. If you look on page 18 of your council packet, 18 and 19, there's two color exhibits. That's an aerial that shows the current pond. And this new pond, if you look on page 19, is a better adaptation, so it would fit south of the power lines, maybe even cross under the power lines.
Then that is, that pond is at capacity?
The pond is at capacity. As I understand, if the developer or ourselves were to touch that pond without doing any new drainage to it, we'd have to increase the size by 20% to meet current rules and regulations.
Thank you.
I move to approve a resolution to perform work to explore the feasibility of acquiring the land from Milwaukee County.
Second?
Okay, I guess we need to suggest a change on that. On the task order on page 14, it lists an effective date of June 5th, we need to change that to tomorrow. Yeah, we'll just change it to tomorrow. It's also for 2018. Is that okay? Alderman Handman?
It is.
Yes.
That amendment.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and credit to the clerk for seeing that. Our Alderman Wilhelm, I apologize. Alderman Wilhelm gets the credit. G3, page 23, a $5,000 partnership contribution to the Regional Transit Leadership Council for Last Mile Transportation Solution Plan to serve Franklin job centers. This is generated by me. The Regional Transit Leadership Council is working with Sewer PAC and Milwaukee County Transit System to study last mile opportunities. And this would allow us to direct some focus onto what we need here in Franklin as a sponsor, as opposed to being just a general thing.
Mayor?
This would come out of Economic Development Fund's program. Alderman Barber?
Move to approve the one-time payment of $5,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Handman. Questions?
Discussion?
Alderman Mayor?
So this isn't necessarily giving the approval for the bus to come in anywhere into the city, we would still look at individual routes that would be proposed, or what's the next step after this?
Well, I'll just fill you in that currently Sewer PAC and the Regional Transit Leadership Council is studying a bus rapid transit line on 27th Street. The current proposal is to end it at IKEA, just like the current route is. My comments and jumping up and down for the last almost 30 years were, we've got the largest business park in the county that has no bus service, and our employers need employees. And Employee Milwaukee has employees that are looking for work. So the issue always comes down to is, how do we get them there in a timely manner? That's part of the study. But my suggestion was to run the BRT to at least Ascension, if not through the new business park, and turn around and come back. So that leaves what? The issue of the last mile. How do we get them from there to the businesses they work at in the business park? So that's what this is studying along with the BRT line. Alderman Mayor? Is that it?
That's it.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G4, page 27, what do you want for a sidewalk or trail?
So, give me some rise?
Alderman, do you want to, anybody have an opinion? Opinion I have is make it a sidewalk and it's free, or it's $7,000 bucks.
I like a sidewalk.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Option A.
Yeah, I, well, I'll make it, but go ahead, Glenn, we talked for...
I mean, it's still got to be a decision of which side you want it on. I see the recommendation, the west side. The west side is, there's controversy on the west side.
If you want it on the other side, it's going to take some additional work by DOT to figure out how much that's going to cost because of some wetland and other issues.
Well, the east side has more residential houses that might actually use it versus the west side.
It's only money.
That's right, it's only money. You know... I guess, you know, you guys, you did the study, you did the analysis, and you said you're recommending the west side.
I, well, correction.
Is it a less invasion of trees?
So WISDOT actually did the evaluation. If you look at towards the top of page 28 in your packet, determined that state funding would only be justified on one side, so you have to pick one side over the other, and then, oh, I thought it was in here. There is a description somewhere that tells why it's better on that side. WISDOT determined a 10-foot multi... I'm still not seeing it. Oh, the last bullet point, estimated cost, it's still not it.
$8,000?
WISDOT asked for a view sidewalk on the east side of State Trunk Highway 100, determined state funding for one side. In that case, city of Franklin would prefer the east side of State Trunk Highway 100 instead of the west. Sorry. I don't know, I thought it was in there somewhere. It was wetlands was the issue.
That ringtone makes a lot of sense now.
Sorry.
All makes sense.
Apologize.
Let me back up and provide you a little bit more information quickly. In meeting with the DOT, we asked for the option of sidewalks on either or both sides of the street from at least Elm Court or Prairie Grass Way to, actually, we asked them up to Ross and Avenue. And that's at this stretch, on the east stretch, 60th Street, we asked them for a multi, I'm recalling a multi-use path from 60th Street all the way up to Elm Court. That's not going to happen. So plainly, we can't afford it. So the next conversation that I had with Glenn and a couple others was, okay, you're going to rebuild the road and you're doing grading, why don't you just grade it out for that, and at some point in the future, we'll put it on the north side of Highway 100. And their current policy doesn't permit that. Now go figure that out, but that's a whole different deal. So what you have here is what needs to be decided today, which is east or west side?
I stand somewhat corrected. I think the sidewalk is not impacted. So the pathway, if you look at the fourth bullet point, the pathway regards to the side would have some wetland issues that pretty makes that very difficult. So the sidewalk, I believe that it can be installed on either side. Which side would you prefer, if you prefer one over the other?
Well, is the east side going to cost me $82,000, and the west side's only going to cost me $7,000?
The $82 is for a pathway.
Is a pathway. Now, the next question is, is then, are we allowed to, if we're going to do something like this, are we allowed to possibly use impact fees? If we go to a path?
We've previously decided that only pathways, is it 51%? 71%? That's a possibility, we can do some further investigation.
When do we have to have an answer?
They're in design right now, so they're...
I know they'd like it as quick as possible.
Do you want an approval based on working and staff?
You can table it to the next meeting, I believe.
One side's my side, one side is Alderman Nelson's side, so if you want to table it to the next meeting?
Set a motion?
Then I'll make a motion to table to the next meeting.
I'll second that, but I have some discussion.
Push your button. Alderman Nelson?
So this goes back to, I'm assuming, some of those meetings we had, when we had some citizen input. What are we determining from that input? I mean, are we getting any more feedback from anything? Because I've gotten personally nothing on this.
I don't recall DOT's had a public meeting regarding this section.
They had the public meeting discussing everything that was attached to all the whole project. I remember that whole, they had the whole drawing, they had the whole mini cars, mini everything, I'm just saying.
Wasn't that further north?
Was there any discussion, or was there any citizen impact or citizen feedback regarding this at all? If not, I mean, I want to table it regardless till next meeting, but I'm just wondering if we've heard any...
I believe you might be, or at least I'm thinking of the Ross and North project, where they had a lot of citizen input.
Okay. Have we received anything on this from anybody then?
I'm not aware of it.
I'm looking for a table till next meeting. I'll second that then.
Alderman Wilhelm?
It clearly states at the top of the page that there are no right-of-way impacts associated with the work on the southwest side, $35,000, 20%, that's where the $7,000 comes from. Where did it say in here about any impacts on the other side?
That's where I said I misspoke. So the pathway, it indicated that, I think regardless of the side, there was some wetland issues. I think that was, that's what I'm recalling.
This one's talking about right-of-way issues. Are there right-of-way issues on the other side? Because this one says no right-of-way issues. That might be one of the deciding factors.
I'll have to follow up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Mayor?
It's not my district, and I could see the sidewalk going on either side, but it seems to me it clearly would do the greater good by going on the east side. Seems like it would serve the majority of the most people on that side. It seems to make sense. But regardless of which side it goes on, Glenn, how are they going to define the crosswalks for the sidewalk, and how is it going to cross St. Martin's Road?
I have not seen details. There's still...
That would be a major concern for me. That would be a major concern for me.
Well, if it's on the northeast side, it would not cross St. Martin's, St. Martin's Road. It would only cross Loomis.
Yeah, I understand the sidewalk wouldn't, but the people would cross to get to the sidewalk. One way or the other, whether they cross from one side or the other side to get to it.
Yeah, and I'm sure they're going to tell you that there is no, there is no way to make a crossing at Prairie Grass Way because it crosses to nothing on the other side. And similar, well, Poots might be able to be okay, but Elm Court is the same situation. So it's an issue. We'll have to work it out. The motion is tabled. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was tabled on the next meeting, by the way. G5, page 29. Ordinance amend 2024-53, an ordinance adopting the 2021 annual budget for general fund for appropriation of $25,000 for replacement of streetlights.
So move.
Second.
Barber and Dandria. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Dandria.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Elder Woman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absent and no abstentions. G6 on page 33, a request to replenish DPW inventory of street lighting supplies.
So move.
Barber and Nelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G7, page 35, the annual market adjustment, market adjustment, wage and salary increases, and progress to market adjustments for non-reps. Any questions? Alderman Nelson.
So.
Hold on, push your button.
So just so I can just clarify something, as I know in the next Finance Committee meeting, as I alluded to Paul earlier, there's a few on there that they blow their minds when they see a guaranteed raise. So just so we're on the same page, this is a 2.5% period, correct? That we're seeing?
If employees are performing.
Okay, and we've got the money budgeted?
Correct.
Nothing further.
Anyone else?
Move to approve.
Second.
One question.
The, the train, the team of Barber and Nelson, Alderman Mayor.
Peggy, how are we with coming up with our performance evaluation system for the merit pay that we've been talking about for long before you got here?
I wish I could honestly tell you that we were further than we are. We had a couple items that we had to do on personnel quicker than that one, but that will happen in 2021. We do need a merit program as well as a performance appraisal system.
Thank you. Meanwhile, that money that was set aside for the merit raises, how is that being, it's in the pool. How is that being distributed? Is it being distributed?
It, when, once we get a program to bring forward, then we'll ask to spend it for, through the same approval.
So right now, no one's getting merit raises?
No one's getting merit raises. We don't, we don't, we don't really have a merit program at this point.
Right, and that's the whole reason for it. Okay, thank you.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G8 is closed session, we'll move on to, and we'll do that last, item H, licenses.
I'd like a special consideration for one.
Okay.
Guess which one?
This is your call.
Your pleasure.
Push your microphone.
Thank you. Regarding the extraordinary entertainment and special event application by the Rock Sports Complex for the virtual Bon Jovi concert on 5/22/21, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., the committee recommends approval. We move approval.
Okay, so can I ask a couple questions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alderman Mayor.
So I've heard various reports that it was going to be shown twice, once in the Milky Way and once in the stadium. Does this cover both of those or just one of them?
The understanding is the later showing at the Milky Way Drive-In, starting at approximately 9:30 or so, 9:30, 9:45, that would be covered under the previous approval of the Milky Way Drive-In. It's just like a movie being shown, the broadcasting is only through the radio, so within the cars. This is a previous showing in the stadium from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it will be treated, although it's not a baseball game, it's, the committee looked at it very much as a baseball game with the assurances from the applicant that it will not be louder than any baseball game and that they will turn down some of the speakers as requested.
And that speaker, especially the one that seemed so contentious, that seemed contentious for years, that will be turned down? We have a promise of that?
That was the understanding we got.
If I had, is it on there? If, if I had it in front of me, the permit, because I believe the, the mayor had identified which one it was explained to us tonight by the representative, and that was the one, I believe, which was the longer, the larger one, that was to be lowered and the pasture, left pasture. So that's, I guess that's the one that was the problem or the issued one without taking away from the show, but that's what it was talked about. And that's what the representative, Mr. Johnson, agreed to address. And that's what we talked about.
So it's in the Milky Way, the earlier shows in the Milky Way, that's going to be solely in the vehicle radios.
The later show.
Later show, sir.
Excuse me, the later show. And that will be solely in the vehicles, not broadcast throughout the property?
Not at all.
Okay, and the earlier one that is in the stadium and they have agreed to turn the speaker, that's the problem, lower it or turn it down somewhat. Can we get some verification on exactly what gets done there? Is somebody here going to be in attendance there?
Well, let's be clear. When this was discussed several months ago, my expertise in the matter was questioned. So this is my suggestion for what might help the problem. If it doesn't help the problem, somebody else will have to deal with it. As for checking on it, not me.
Is it possible, I would like to, like to request that we have the police department do monitoring in the neighborhoods during the concert events with the handheld monitor at various locations during the events?
We have three installed, permanently installed, very sensitive meters that are calibrated to the proper standards.
I'm requesting the police department to do it.
Again, I don't know anything about this, so maybe a police officer with a handheld meter would do better.
So does that mean you're in agreement with that?
It means it's a waste of time at a police department.
I'm requesting it. Can it be done?
The chief is here. I, I'm loath to even ask him that question because the police department has no formal training in this where the county is spending $50,000 to study this. Here's an opportunity. I, I, you know, our police officers got a lot better things to do than go stand at, on, on some street with a meter, hoping that something will happen. That's just not an effective use of our people. You can, you can have the council direct it, that's fine.
I would request that the council direct the police department to take various readings during the concert events, probably working with the planning department to identify locations where it would be the most beneficial.
Okay, but there's a motion on the floor. If you want to do that in a minute, you can do that in a minute, Mr. City Attorney.
Thought is that with regard to supervision and direction for the police department, that that would be the realm of the Police and Fire Commission as opposed to the common council. Or, and/or the chief of police versus the common council directing specific functions of the law enforcement department.
Would anything stop us from making a request?
No.
Then I would suggest that we make that request of the police department.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Alderman Wilhelm. Push your button.
I guess I was taking notes during citizen comment period, so we could try to address some of the concerns. And the question was, what does turning down mean? So that question wasn't answered. I understand they're going to turn it down, but, and that leads to Alderman Mayor's concern. I know that if there's a noise complaint, that this police department handles the noise complaint. So I thought that's the way it was in the ordinance that annoys. So, all right, so since you're telling me they don't, maybe you could correct me on who handles a noise complaint when it comes in.
A complaint is issued via the complaint system. It goes to the planning staff who then downloads the data from the sound measuring meters, the three of them that exist. And if it exceeds the limits, 79 dB for longer than some period of time that I don't even remember, then there's a, I believe there's a violation at that.
Okay, well, I guess we were talking about two different things. It was my understanding, say, there's an argument happening in the neighborhood and some loud music is playing that when a noise complaint like that requires a more immediate action, that's typically handled by the police department, I guess. So that's the kind of thing I'm having this addressing. So the neighbors could, if they have a loud complaint, could make that direct, would compel the police department to come out without a motion.
Police department does not respond to noise complaints to the ballpark commons.
Okay, so that we've made a whole different setup just for that business?
Yep.
Okay.
That's part of the PDD that you all voted on.
I don't remember. The PDD has been changed a lot of times. So, so then the other information was the information that we were sent here and I just wanted to make sure that this was addressed. So this was from the planning department to Ms. Gint, who spoke. And he says, per the PDD, the extraordinary entertainment and special event is a permitted use at the Rock, but it's subject to the extraordinary entertainment and special event permits. And then he provided her the section of the ordinance. And then in the section of the ordinance, this is all stuff that's at your place, I'm guessing. Section of the ordinance says, under item DD, that temporary uses, entertainment are permitted by the UDO and the municipal code. So then Dana had provided us, I think that's where this came from, from the clerk through Dana, those sections of the municipal code. And, you know, the numbers are all municipal code, not UDO, I think. And then that says, shall be subject to the following terms. And they shall follow all these rules and regulations in ordinance and building codes and fire codes and health department codes and all of that. Then her question says, so, no license shall permit any sound created by the special event activity to carry unnecessarily beyond the boundaries of the special event. So since that's in here, are you saying the PDD bypasses this particular ordinance based on the PDD? Because this still goes back to the regular sound ordinance and all the ordinance and zoning codes according to this municipal code section. So I'm just a little confused by that.
I'll ask the city attorney to address which supersedes which. But this happens so often in our discussions around here. Words are important. And the ordinance says, no license shall permit any sound created by the special event activity to carry unreasonably.
That's right.
And you said unnecessarily or something like that. So there's, there's guidance in the PDD and regulation there that's actually stricter than this, as it's defined, unreasonable. What's unreasonable? I've heard some parties at Dandria's house that I would have considered unreasonable.
Mayor, I'm not making any arguments one way or the another. I was just asking to try to understand the process and which supersedes. That's it.
So Mr. City Attorney? PDD versus ordinance?
No, because the Department of City Development, over the last number of years, has been the department involved in detail on the entirety of the application of the planned development district ordinance, and I don't have PDD in front of me.
Okay. And, and that's a fair answer, because I don't have it either and it's, it's changed a lot. So the, the other question that I think she brought up was, can we all get some kind of a process? And the, the fact right now that it speaks to, we're not really sure if which overrides which. I would really like to see that process issue addressed. So it's like, okay, do they need a permit? Do they don't need a permit? What we frequently hear is, we weren't sure we needed a permit. So I'm okay with wherever we're going with this, but I do think that the concern's about, we all need to know what applies and what's permitted and what sections. And we need to lay it out for each event, just like we do when any other thing comes before the license, even like the public grant. We all know what's required when someone asks for a public grant. They have to show their insurance, they have to show that they're a nonprofit, they have. So those are the type of things, if we could do this with special events, I think it might help us clear up a lot of questions each time.
Mr. City Attorney.
With regard to part of your statement that there's questions as to whether this is appropriate, et cetera, the Department of City Development reviewed this. If it was in any way not in conformity with the applicable ordinances, it wouldn't be here. Or there would be a staff report stating that it doesn't comply with the ordinance.
Well, just to respond to that, I didn't see any of those documents I was in yesterday to do some of those. And none of those documents were available at the time that I was there. And I'm not disputing that it wouldn't be there. What I'm saying is, moving forward, if we could just have all of that for everyone to look at. And I'm not pointing at this project in directly, I'm just saying that it would be just helpful for the, for all of us to be on board. That's all.
No, I'm not going to respond. Alderman Hanneman.
And in response to Alderman Mayor's question about the police going and holding the sound monitors around there, we did receive commentary from the police upon, for this application, saying that they had no issues. So personally, I would not support a request to have the police over there. In my mind, if we're going to do that, we'd have to have the police there for every baseball game too. Because it's just, it's the same time as the baseball games. In fact, the applicant did tell us that the virtual concert that's being shown in the baseball stadium, it's going to be via DVD Blu-ray. And he indicated that the way the sound is recorded on that, it's not going to be able to be amplified as much as voices, actual voices over the loudspeaker. Now, I'm no expert in that, but that's.
I used to be an expert, but I'm not going to tell you how it works.
No, no, no.
Chief Valero.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could just get one more point of clarification. So if the police are called for a sound issue. So if the police are called for a sound issue in the neighborhood near the ballpark, police will not respond? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's the practice. Now, of course, there's always exceptions. But that's up to the shift commander.
But anywhere else in the city, if in any other neighborhood, if there's a noise issue, the police department would respond?
Chief.
Okay, so with the current meters, then, you will get a reading of those meters during the concerts eventually? Okay. Okay, that. Okay. I'm glad you're here tonight to clarify these things. Thank you. And that does clarify. So Monday morning, you would see, someone would see the meter readings. If they did go over, what would the process be at that point?
I described that earlier in this conversation. There's a lot of short-term memory. If there is an alleged violation, the planning staff looks at the meter readings from that, for that time period, and ascertains whether or not there is a material violation. If there's a material violation, the planning staff will write a citation, signed by the assistant city attorney, and that will go to the operator.
Okay, that was much more.
This has all been documented and talked about many, many times.
That's much more clear than you said before. And with the chief's clarification, this is very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve this one item.
One more question. Alderwoman Hanneman, are you confident then, Alderman Nelson, you're confident that something would be done with that speaker that's been the problem? They did agree to do something with that speaker?
Yes, I'm confident, number one, but I also like the fact that there is accountability. And the accountability lies with the current measure of the reading of the noise. So I think that's going to go a long ways well.
No further questions?
Okay. All those in favor of approving these special events license for ballpark commons, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to licenses, Alderman Hanneman.
Operator New and Renewal, Bellistriary, approve with letter. Banasek, new and renewal, approve. Jacobs, new and renewal, approve with letter. Vasilyevit, hold over to next meeting. Operator Banks, Fisher, Osvadik, approve. Page two, move approval for all applicants. Page three, move approval for all applicants. Page four, move approval for all applicants. Page five, move approval for renewal, Schneider, Wiltius, Wist, and Zimmer. Move approval for amusement device operator, Reggie's Amusements. Class A combination. Dairyland Retail Group, subject to compliance with state and city requirements. Approval. Also for Jujar and QuickTrip, number 287. QuickTrip, number 857. New Liquor and Food, Inc., Ryan Fuel, LLC. Sam's East, Inc., hold pending premise description clarification. Then we have Sendix, yes, is approved, subject to compliance with state and city requirements. And that is the same for all of page six through eight. Approval subject to compliance with state and city requirements. Also for page seven of eight, all are, we move to approve, subject to compliance with state and city requirements. As with, on page eight of eight, move approval for Root Group, LLC, St. Martin's Inn, LLC, M Squared, Inc., Demon, LLC, Brinker Restaurant Corporation, all approved, subject to compliance with state and city requirements. Temporary entertainment and amusement, Rainbow Valley Rides, Inc., is approved. Application for temporary entertainment and amusement, Civic Celebration, Fourth of July festivities, is approved, pending the fireworks application approval by the Franklin Fire Department. And temporary Class B beer, Civic Celebration, Fourth of July festivities, move approval on that.
And for the record, the clerk is responsible for gathering people for the ride test event. So anyone who wishes to come and test the rides prior to the opening of the Fourth of July should see the clerk. She is always in the front car of the roller coaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Nelson, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I won. Page 51 is a motion to approve city vouchers and ending date of March, May 14th, in the amount of $2,993,395.35. And payroll dated May 7th, in the amount of $401,838.3 cents. And payments to the various payroll deductions in the amount of $224,676.66 plus city matching payments. An estimated payroll for May 21st, estimated $410,000 in payments to various payroll deductions, estimated $456,000 plus city matching payments, and property tax disbursements with an ending date of May 13th in the amount of $2,285.95. So move. Barbara and Dandrea, all those in, roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderman Mayor?
Aye.
Alderman Dandrea?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six sizes, no no's, no absence, no extensions. For those of you on YouTube, we are going to go into closed session and end the stream. If there is some action on this item afterwards, we will not resume the YouTube stream, but the audio will be available on the city's website. Oh, yeah. Is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 19.851C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibilities, and Wisconsin Stat 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to strategize on how to address an employment matter and to discuss an agreement between the city of the city, the Franklin Police Officers Association of the WPPA, and a specific employee represented by that association and re-enter open session at the same place thereafter, tact on such matters as discussed therein as it deems appropriate.
I made the motion.
Second.
Wilhelm and Dandrea, all those in favor? Madam Clerk?
Alderman Dandrea?
Aye.
Alderman Mayor?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries or in closed session, but hold on one second.
Employee represented by the union, as discussed in closed session.
Is there such a motion? So move.
Second.
Barbara and Hanneman, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask a very quick question?